Welcome to PIG's Fireside Chats with Candidates. This evening's chat is with Billy Friedland, who's running for city council. I'm Joyce Short, and my co-host is Ellen Pollavee. Billy Friedland is a progressive activist who currently serves as the Secretary for Community Board Eight. He's also a junior board member for the Stanley Isaacs Neighborhood House. Billy is an attorney, and he has defended people against discrimination and social injustice. So, welcome, Billy. And can we start with what's motivating you in order to run for office?
There's so much potential here in this city that I love, and that's why I'm running, because I think we can realize that potential together.
Excellent. So, why should we pick you instead of somebody else?
It's a very fair question, because many of the people running are colleagues of mine on the community board. But I think here's what I bring uniquely to the table. It's the combination of the community experience, being a leader on the community board, with our progressive and fresh ideas, with the one thing that I don't believe anyone's bringing to the table, which is my experience as an attorney. And it's not just the insight it's given me into what's broken, but I think I'll be able to bring to the table, bring to my council office, an army of lawyers and social service providers who can help get people the relief they need. Just a few weeks ago, I was on Roosevelt Island, and I met a woman who told me about a surprise medical billing incident she had. She had, I think she had even spoken with another candidate, wasn't able to get the relief she sought. She talked to me about her need, and I was able to pair her immediately with the right resources to get that relief, and now she owes none of that surprise ambulance bill. That's the type of service I thrive on. I think that's what this job is about at the end of the day. It's that Mayor LaGuardia quote, "There's no democratic or republican way of cleaning the streets." I really believe that. And so, to bring my sort of energy enthusiasm for constituent services, paired with what I know about as being a lawyer, and paired with the humility of knowing when I don't know the answer, I know where to turn. I know the resources where to turn, whether it's in government, in nonprofits, in the legal community. I think we need to be doing a lot more to get people legal aid for housing repairs in particular, but also getting our small business owners or people who want to own a small business or who want to open up a childcare facility, getting them the legal help they need to cut through the bureaucracy. That's something I think I'm equipped to do somewhat uniquely in this race. So, I really respect everyone running. I've learned a lot from them, I'll be honest, and I can even tell you what I've learned. I think I'm the only person that runs for office who names my opponents on my website. And I do that because, at the end of the day, I think we're all in this as a community, and this is about figuring out who should be our next representative, and then supporting them, making sure that they succeed. But I think I have a sort of a background as an attorney, community activist, that is unique, paired with ideas that I know we'll get into tonight, but ideas that I think are really fresh and new and different. Because I think we can't deal with 21st century problems with 20th century solutions. We can't deal with the politics of the past anymore. We have to turn the page.
Excellent. So, now that you mention it, what are the three most important things on your platform that are particularly of interest to you? And what are the approaches that you'll use in order to make a difference?
It's great, great question. So, I'll confess, I always find it difficult to decide, but let me boil it down. I think the number one challenge, other than the COVID recovery, is the affordability crisis in the city, and that starts with affordable housing. So, the number one thing I'm fighting for is not just affordable housing, all of us candidates talk about that, but a real program that recognizes the connections between how we build housing, the zoning resolution, homelessness, and right to counsel, and many other ideas. But specifically, our big idea on this is universal right to counsel, making sure people aren't getting evicted, combined with completely rewriting the zoning resolution. And the zoning resolution was written in 1961. Maybe we can get into what specifically I mean by that. The second thing for me is taking a restorative justice approach to how we deal, not just with public safety, but all the things that extend from that sort of public safety umbrella. You know, when someone is homeless and struggling on the street, maybe dealing with a mental health crisis, how are we responding to them? Are we responding to them with empathy? Are we trying to put a roof over their head, get them the services that we need? Or are we criminalizing them, which is what we've done so often? Rikers Island is the second largest mental health provider in the entire country, second only to the jail in Cook County in Chicago, Illinois. And then, the third big issue for me is climate change. Because I look at Washington DC, and unless they get rid of the filibuster, I don't see the sweeping climate legislation we need. We'll see some of it in the infrastructure bill, I hope. But ultimately, it's the cities like New York that are going to have to lead the way on combating climate change. And I think we can do this through two main areas. Actually, I'll name three. One is how we regulate building emissions, particularly new buildings that come up. Two is transportation, and I want to see us have an all-electric bus fleet and all-electric sanitation fleet moving forward, but also bus lanes and bus networks to make our buses go from worst to first, and a connected bike network. And then, third is the sort of miscellaneous category, but a big part of which is composting. I volunteer with the Hockey Compost Collective on Roosevelt Island occasionally. I've learned through them the importance of composting. And if we don't take seriously what we do with our food scraps, which when they go to landfill, they don't emit CO2, they decompose and they emit methane, and methane is 84 times more potent than CO2. So, unless we take universal composting seriously, we're not going to deal with the climate crisis as a city. So, to sum up, I would say affordable housing, restorative justice model for public safety, and climate change.
So, now, a lot of people hear the word restorative justice and don't really understand what it means. So, one of the things that I've heard of concern for people when they hear about restorative justice is, is it required from the victim in order for them to participate in restorative justice? How does that work? Is everybody required to engage in a restorative justice situation? Or is it something that the prosecutor determines? Is it something that the victim determines? How about filling us in a little bit and describing what that process is, and whether people would be required to submit to it or not?
The short answer, as I see it, is no, people would not be required. Because the centerpiece of restorative justice is the word accountability. It's about bringing accountability for the wrong that was done. And that centers around the person who has, you know, committed a crime, for example. You know, how's that person held accountable? But also, how do we bring that person to a place where we help them to get to a place where they're not committing crimes again, where they get stability on their own feet? And then, for the victim, how do we make sure that the victim feels that they've been made whole? Some victims will want accountability directly, they'll want to participate in the process. Other victims may say, "I'm afraid," or "I want to turn the page, I want to turn the chapter." I think it's incredibly important that we make sure that victims are treated well and properly, given the trauma that they've likely just experienced. The worst thing we could possibly do is put a victim in a place where they're not comfortable. But let me widen the lens a bit about what I'm really talking about with restorative justice. It's about breaking away from a model that centers incarceration. Incarceration has its place, but it's not always the right solution. And oftentimes, we actually find out that incarceration can make us less safe. For example, there was a study that just came out today, I think, or this week, that noted that incarcerating people for misdemeanors makes it more likely that they will commit a more serious crime in the future. And one takeaway from that, and we can debate this as we should as a society, is are there alternatives? When someone commits a misdemeanor, when someone commits, say, a very minor theft, are there alternatives to helping that person than, say, throwing them into Rikers Island for 364 days, as we sometimes do? And I think there are alternatives. There's lots of work, lots of studies that show that rather than incarceration, instead, pre-trial diversion programs, required classes, things like that, can actually help that person not just understand the wrong they've done, but help them get the housing and services they need and to get a fresh start that takes them off this path that has led them to commit the initial crime in the first place. So, I think exploring models like that can be extremely beneficial, not just to victims, but to the person, the defendant. And this is really important, I think it's a moral issue. It's important for public safety reasons, because I do believe it'll make us more safe. It's important economically to our budgets, if we think about it. I don't know if most folks know this, the cost of incarcerating someone on Rikers Island, $925 per night, the cost of a very fancy five-star hotel, that's $337,000 per year. If we just thought about all the things we could do, mental health treatment, housing, education, instead of that, investing in communities that have historically been overpoliced, think about what we could accomplish as a city. And the other data point to keep in mind is, who is in our city jails? We're about to spend $11 billion to build new jails. Who are we incarcerating? 25% of the jail population are incarcerated for those misdemeanors I just mentioned. The other 75% are incarcerated because they're being held pre-trial. They haven't been convicted of anything. My conviction is that we could dramatically reduce that jail population, because we know the vast, vast majority, more than 90%, of people who are incarcerated pre-trial do return for their court dates. So, we could dramatically reduce the jail population and help people. Because, don't take my word for it, the former chief judge of New York State, Jonathan Littman, has said that one day, one week, one month in jail, there's horrible things to a human being. You often lose your job, you may lose your housing, you may lose educational scholarships, you could face risk of deportation, it breaks up your family. It is fundamentally destructive to a human being, and I think we have to reckon with those costs as a society. And again, it can still be for the benefit of all of us, for our public safety, for victims, for our budget. It's a moral issue. So, I hope, Joyce, that helps answer a little bit of how I think about what role restorative justice plays. But to your direct question, no, I don't think we should ever force a victim to have to be in that position of confronting the person that they've accused, for example. I think that can often do more harm than good.
Yeah, excellent. So, I think that's a very good explanation, I appreciate it. So, at this point, I'm going to turn my little torch over to Ellen, and I'm going to duck out of here for a second, because...
Let's go back to affordable housing. Main, big question. I had heard, I had heard somebody in, talking about the housing projects. And that's one of the only projects that, one of the only housing that somebody with a very low income can get into, you know, except for maybe some of the senior housing. And even that, if somebody's a senior and they have very low housing, they often can't get into most of the senior housing. It's only the HUD housing that they could get into, because that takes a quarter of their salary. So, you know, a lot of people are living on social security, only social security, which some maxes out, and you know, maybe $2,000 a month. So, that doesn't get you into anything but, let's say, public housing. So, what can you do? What else can somebody do? Public housing, as bad as it is, is a 10 to 15-year waiting list? What else is there for people with very low income that want to live in the city?
It's a phenomenal question, and it's one of the most important things that we think about as a campaign. I think there's no answer, there's no single silver bullet, first of all, but there's no answer that's going to be satisfactory unless it looks at every single piece of how we build housing as a city. So, what do I mean, what do I intend? I think first, we need to build housing with specific set-asides for older adults who want to live in, who want to age in place. I don't think we do that enough as a city, but you know, we are also developing housing, I think, in an incredibly inefficient way, that is really not building meaningful levels of affordable housing, whether it's for older adults, whether it's for people exiting our homeless shelter system, whether it's for people who are making $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 per year. So, I think, this brings me to what I mentioned earlier. We need to revisit the entire zoning resolution that governs our city. And for those who may not know, when we build in the city, one of the key documents anyone has to look at is the zoning resolution. The zoning resolution dictates where you can build something. It's what stops us putting a Ferris wheel on the corner of 86 and Second, but it's also what could stop us from, you know, building a 100-foot-tall building in a mid-block, because here on the Upper East Side, we limit our mid-block buildings to 75 stories. Not quite as the same on Roosevelt Island, but it's something we do. And we have a resolution written in 1961, it replaced a resolution written in 1916. So, 45 years had passed. Well, 60 years have passed since the zoning resolution of 61, and I think it's time that we write something, some rules of the road, that actually match the 21-year that we're living in currently. And part of what I would require in a new zoning resolution is, first, I want it written by communities. I don't want developers driving the bus. And for too long, developers are driving our politics. It's why I don't take any money from real estate developers. And importantly, because not every candidate in my race can say this, I don't take money from the lobbyists. I reject lobbyist money completely in this race, because I think you have to be independent. You need a zoning resolution written by, for, and with communities. And you need a zoning resolution that recognizes that the value of New York City's land is in the trillions. This is one of the most valuable places in the world to build. Developers are not facing particular hardship right now, particularly large landlords like, and developers like, Excel and Related. So, I believe we need to be going to them and saying, "We want you, we demand that you put in meaningful levels of affordable housing when you build." Because sometimes they're putting in 20% or 30% affordable in the units, but affordability often means you make $90,000 a year, maybe you make $120,000 a year. What about the older adult aging in place? What about the teacher, making $40,000, $50,000, $60,000? What about the firefighter here, you know, serving us so well in our city but can't find a place to live in the neighborhoods that they serve? So, we had this first start with rewriting the rules of the road. The second thing we need to do is build social housing, which includes public housing, but it goes also beyond that. You know, Mitchell Lama is a form of social housing, where we built 150,000 Mitchell Lama units in the mid-20th century. Half or so of those, I believe, were rental model, the other half were co-ops, ownership model. The ownership model worked extremely well. You had people who were able to stay in their home, live affordably. Unfortunately, we saw Mitchell Lama programs getting phased out. But the key bargain in Mitchell Lama was, you will get this incredible affordable opportunity, but here's the catch, when you decide to sell, you can't go speculate, you can't go flip it for millions of dollars. It has to be, you know, relative, a modest amount on top of what you bought it for, relative to what you bought it. The point being, that's the type of housing we need. Mitchell Lama for the 21st century. We also need community land trust, which is essentially a model where a nonprofit owns the land and then controls the development that happens on that land. We don't have a much, a whole lot of vacant land here in District Five, but in communities that do, we could be pursuing that type of model to build genuinely affordable housing, including for our seniors. We also, you know, have a lot of land that is vacant, but it's not that it's owned by the city. And we see this particularly on the Upper East Side, for example, First Avenue between 85th and 86th, land that's been vacant for years. And we can speculate as to why it's vacant. Maybe the developer, Excel or Related, is waiting to tear down one last tenement building. Maybe they've given up on the project, maybe something else. I think we should have a land value tax that taxes the underlying value of that land, puts pressure on developers to move forward with their projects, not letting this, you know, kind of very unsightly, unseemly thing with negative externalities persist, and then take the funds from that land value tax to pay for affordable housing, to pay for public and social housing, things like that. We do have to partner with the state and federal level on these issues. The state, sorry, the federal government passed a law in the Clinton administration that basically says, "You cannot build new public housing unless you take some public housing away." So, you can't build net new public housing in this country. That is wrong. That is a betrayal of the fundamental sacred promise we made as a country. And so, I think we have to ask our legislators at the federal level to repeal that. It's called the Faircloth Amendment. And then, we need them to help fund public housing, help fund NICA, help fund social housing, and help fund the underlying housing vouchers that we need, help fund the right to council expansion that I'd like to see happen. We could go on and on, because there's so many parts of this ecosystem. I just would be remiss if I didn't mention how this ties into homelessness. Because so many people who are homeless, they aren't homeless because, you know, as some people say, "Oh, you showed up from out of town and you arrived." That's often not the case. It's often the case that someone was, you know, living paycheck to paycheck, and then maybe had a horrible medical accident, maybe lost their job. They go to the hospital, we've actually seen stories of this recently. They went to the hospital, and they came back from the hospital, their belongings were kicked to the curb. This happened, I believe, to a restaurant worker recently, there was a story. And then, folks were sent into our homeless shelter system. And we have inadequate vouchers for people to get out of that system. So, we need to increase the value of those vouchers, so that people can afford market-rate rentals. We also need to build more supportive housing, permanent supportive housing for people, housing that can help people get the services on-site that they need. We need to build safe havens, which we're proposing doing on 91st Street. Those are aimed at people who are experiencing chronic homelessness. So, this is an entire complex ecosystem. It goes everything from our most basic homelessness policies, which is riddled bureaucracy that we have to address, to our 1961 zoning resolution and everything in between. And so, I think, Ellen, that's a way that we start to address the fundamental issue you're addressing. There's no silver bullet, like I said at the start. There's no easy way to deal with large waitlists for people seeking public housing, for people with, you know, Section 8 vouchers. But we can start by settling on a basic premise. Public housing is public, social housing is what we should be aspiring to. And until we make housing an interest of the state again, something that we have a moral obligation to build and build it affordably, until we do that again, we're going to continue this cycle of giving away the keys to developers, building luxury super-talls, and not doing the type of development that I think sustains our communities and builds the New York that we all love, the New York that Roosevelt Island was meant to be in the image of FDR.
We've got to get, we've got to get creative, because there's far too many people that need, that need living space, that would be perfectly happy to live in a small, you know, in a little space, just so they have that they can call their own.
Yeah, and let me just jump in on that, because there's, I mean, there's a few ideas I didn't mention, which is, you know, SROs got a bad name, single-room occupancy apartments, but there's a model, a 21st century model of SROs that I think could work without some of the downsides that we saw decades ago. We could be legalizing basement apartment units to create a little bit more housing. We could legalize accessory dwelling units.
You have, you've talked a lot in your very mammoth platform about the intersectionality of a lot of the different topics, like homelessness and housing, and climate change intersects with transportation. So, let's talk about how homelessness intersects with mental health, and then intersects with the affordable housing. What do you propose for mental health and homelessness?
We know that, you know, being homeless, experiencing homelessness can be an incredibly traumatic moment in someone's life. And we have very disconnected systems for both how we house people experiencing homelessness and how we provide mental health care in the city. You know, in some ways, these are disparate challenges, and I outlined some of my thoughts on, you know, how to help vocalists who are experiencing homelessness. And so, let me turn for a moment to healthcare and then try to link them together. We do not deliver mental health care well at all as a city. We have a Thrive program that has spent nearly $900 million, has a budget in there, nearly $900 million. It's been very ineffective by some measures, and there's some things I like about it. It tried to destigmatize seeking care for mental health issues. I think that's incredibly important, but it didn't really make room for people dealing with serious mental illness. And we don't have a serious mental illness program as a city. And to the extent we do have one, we outsource it, as I mentioned earlier, to our criminal justice system, to our jails, which are some of the largest providers of mental health care. So, we need to start by destigmatizing, decriminalizing, decarcerating mental illness. And what I mean by that is getting people help that they need directly, particularly through our public hospitals, our safety net hospitals. We are woefully short of the number of inpatient psychiatric beds that we used to have. But we also, you know, have issues where, for example, you know, the homeless shelters and housing programs are not communicating with the hospitals, which are not communicating with our jails. So, for example, if someone leaves Rikers Island and ends up in a hospital, what is the level of communication happening there to say, "Hey, this person was diagnosed with XYZ, they need this type of treatment, here's where they are in their recovery." You know, so we need that type of communication, that type of data sharing. We also need to take the police out of mental health response calls, because this is why we, how we criminalize and incarcerate it. We've been sending police to respond to traumatic mental health incidents. And what has happened, even despite our best efforts to train the police to be better at this, is that since 2015, 16 people have been killed during a mental health response call. I'm talking about people experiencing mental health crisis. 14 of them are people of color. So, we have to dramatically reshape how we respond to people in mental distress and health distress. And there are models for this. Eugene, Oregon, has done this extremely well. They took their police department out of mental health response calls. Instead, they have a mental health counselor and an emergency medical technician go to the scene. And since they've done that, they've received 24,000 phone calls about people who are having a mental health crisis. That's one in five, 20% of the calls that were going to their police department, that diverted instead to these mental health response calls. And in only 1% of those cases did they need to rescind a police officer. Similarly, in Denver, Colorado, they just began experimenting with this. And I think the number is something like 746 mental health response calls. Not a single one required police response. So, if we start by, you know, having real health professionals go help people who are dealing with mental health crisis, oftentimes, these are people also experiencing homelessness. That can really break down the kind of over-reliance we've put on the criminal justice system in dealing with mental health. We need to do a lot more, but I think the big thing I'd like to see is permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness. If you talk to someone who is sleeping on the street, for example, and you ask, "Oh, have you saw a homeless shelter?" Oftentimes, they'll tell you, "Yes, I've been to the county, get homeless shelters, and they feel unsafe to me, I've had my things stolen, I've been beaten up." We need the type of housing that makes people feel comfortable. And that could be the safe haven model I described, but it could also be permanent supportive housing, getting someone a roof over their head, but having services on-site, including health, mental health services on-site. I think if we start to think holistically that how our housing or our homelessness system is connected to mental health care, we would go a very long way. I think as a city and a state, we have to be putting a lot more money into mental health care. NYC Care is a program that has actually gotten people the care they need. They can call a number and get that care. So, I think we should be expanding on that. But the touchstone for me is making sure that these programs center serious mental illness. Because as much as I believe we all should have access to a therapist and someone to talk to, you know, certainly, this last year's been awfully traumatizing. At the end of the day, if we're not getting at serious mental illness, then we are failing our task before us as a government. So, that's how I see some of the connections.
I actually, I actually agree. We have been mobile crisis, but it's a small program compared to what we need. We really need some serious, serious expansion of the mental health, you know, mental health treatment. I'm going to give you a choice, because we need to move on to Roosevelt Island issues. So, I just want to hear either your, some of your ideas on climate change and how that connects with buses, or your, and garbage, or in a nutshell, because I'm interested about those free bus idea that you had, or small businesses, because they're really the backbone of New York City. And I know you have a big idea on that one, too. So...
May I try to very quickly get through both? I'll start with a few points on small business. Incredibly important, you look at the vacancies on Main Street. So, a few things I want to see happen. One is repealing the commercial rent tax, which unfairly hits small businesses below 96th Street. Two is a vacancy tax. We've seen far too many landlords kick out a tenant, raise the rent, they don't negotiate in good faith, and then the place is vacant for years, which is a cost to us. It's, there's poor lighting out in front, often the storefront isn't being cleaned, snow is not getting removed in a timely way. So, a vacancy tax, and then using the funds from that vacancy tax to support what I call legacy small businesses, businesses that have been in the neighborhood five, 10 years, not chain stores, but our mom-and-pops. I think those are a few ways that we can directly help our small businesses. And I have a small business council that's been advising me, and it's something I would continue on with in the city council. Climate change, incredibly, incredibly important issue. Like I said, I think the city has to lead the way, and transportation is one way to do it. We should be electrifying our sanitation fleet, we should be electrifying our bus fleet. And I want us to have a very aggressive timeline for electrifying the more than 4,000 buses in our city fleet, of which only about 25 are all-electric right now. Greenhouse gas emissions from transit are about 25% to 30% of our emissions as a city, our greenhouse gas emissions as a city. So, that means, yes, dealing with the buses, but also, you're dealing with car congestion. Our roads are way too congested. We need to rely less on cars, which are the vast majority, private cars, I think are more than 90% of that greenhouse gas emissions among transportation alone. And so, one way to pay for free buses, how do we replace the fare box revenue, which is about $1 billion? We can raise about $1 billion by adopting something called dynamic pricing for parking. This is something that other cities around the world and around the country have tried. It basically says that pricing should adjust for parking spaces according to demand. And there's a rule that this economist Donald Schupf came up with. He's retired from... And there's a rule that this economist Donald Shoup came up with. He's retired from UCLA. It's called the eighty-five percent rule. On any given street, no more than eighty-five percent of the parking spaces should be full. That's how you know that you're pricing things efficiently such that there's turnover and it's good for business. It helps small business, by the way, because it means when a car moves out of a spot, another car can come in and go into the local cafe. Um, so that's really important. So if we, if we do something like dynamic parking and also congestion pricing, which is coming into Manhattan soon, um, we could reduce congestion, we could reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as a city and we could fund all electric and free, free buses. And I think free buses are important because I actually think symbolically it would mean a lot, but also it would get more people to ride the bus. We have two million bus riders in New York City. We should be increasing that. We should be getting people out of cabs. We should have people saying, you know what, the bus lane can actually get you where you're going faster than if you held a cab. And during COVID, we saw people hopping on and off of buses. It was seamless. You didn't have to swipe your card. When buses were free during the pandemic, it meant less time waiting at the bus stop while people were getting on board. It also would mean that we don't have to be spending money on police who are enforcing fare evasion. So there would be some savings associated with it as well. But I think New York should be the gold standard in buses. I think that means on Roosevelt Island, I'd like to bring some form of a select bus to get people faster onto the Manhattan mainland, so to speak. Um, I think, you know, making sure we have an integrated system where you can transfer for free from the ferry to the tram, to the subway. Um, and getting around seamlessly, making sure that we have a connected network for, for bikes uh, as well, so that people can get around without feeling that they're going to be hit by a car. Those are all important aspects of the climate agenda. The last major thing on climate I'll just leave you with is we need to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing our emissions from buildings and reducing our reliance on fossil fuels, including natural gas. We need to solarize our city. This is a great green jobs program by putting solar panels on roofs. Solar panels on Rikers Island, we closed that jail and then we turned Rikers Island into the world's greatest solar farm with battery storage. We need battery storage to store, um, to make solar energy actually work. If we do all those things, have wastewater treatment facilities on Rikers, that will be revolutionary. And it will mean we can reach a carbon neutral future as a city. So these are, um, these are not just slogans for me. This is an idea I'm incredibly passionate about. The committee that I want to chair, if I'm elected to the city council, is environmental protection. Because I want our city to have the world's best green jobs program. I want it to give green jobs first and foremost to NYCHA residents. I want to retrofit NYCHA buildings, reduce their greenhouse gas emissions first. And I want us as a city to be able to say to Washington, say to the world, hey, we are showing you how it is done. We are building a green city. We're doing it well. We're doing it efficiently. We're creating jobs while we're doing it. It's going to be good for our economy. I, I think this is achievable in the next eight years and it's going to be really important who we elect to the city council.
That's great. That was concise. Thank you.
Ish, concise-ish, sorry.
Okay, um, thank you. We're moving on to Roosevelt Island.
Great.
Okay, and you, you actually handled a lot of, answered a lot of those questions already. So will you continue the participatory budgeting process?
Yes.
Part of Roosevelt Island question, but will you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And, and uh, I, I know we're crunch for time, but I'll just briefly elaborate. By going into the communities, particularly on Roosevelt Island, but particularly places like Two Four River Road, often mark, you know, communities that often get pushed out of our political process, aren't at the community board as often as they, you know, they could be. I spoke to the tenants of Two Four River Road recently. I want to make sure that it's not just plugged in political people like ourselves, but also people who maybe don't know about a community board meeting, or even worse, know about it, but they can never make it. I, I want to make sure we're doing outreach to those folks to say, hey, we're doing participatory budgeting. What are your ideas? What should be on the ballot? And then making sure that you're voting for the ideas that are most important to you.
Right, right. Okay, so you know, we, you talked a bit about the housing on Roosevelt Island, but I'd like to hear, I'd like you to talk a little bit more about the, um, we, the last of the Mitchell Lama co-ops are going out soon of, of, of.
On the rentals, the co-ops are gone.
They're going co-op. And, um, um, so then, you know, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of affordable housing in, um, what, um, across the street.
Uh, in land, the landings.
Roosevelt Landing. But that's it. And then, and then some affordable housing in South Town that just moving into now, um, and I don't think that that's affordable. It's, it was high level, you know, it's people with income that is a pretty high, high income levels that.
They, they actually do have an affordability plan right now. And, and it is, you know, it actually is affordable for people. In fact, a, a number of people have left the landings in order to move down there. But it's just a small chunk of real estate that is devoted toward affordability. And we're losing, we're, we're.
Building that was affordable, but that's it really. So do you have any ideas of what we can do? We've lost the senior, we've lost a lot of our, our senior housing and senior and disabled housing. And this was a, an island that had, you know, was meant for seniors and disabled. So what can we do now to bring affordability here?
Yeah, um, I, I don't see how we do it unless we revisit land use and zoning as a city. Because, um, you know, you're right, Joyce, that there are some areas where you have meaningful levels of affordability. But there's a lot of folks I talked to on Roosevelt Island who look at some of the affordable developments going up and say, that's, I don't view that as affordable. And so it's a mixed bag. And, um, I think that's partly because of a zoning code and the way that we, um, decide, well, where does affordable housing get built? What is the deal made with developers to build that level of affordability? So we're going to need a zone, a zoning resolution that gives us more leverage as a community to demand more deeply affordable units and units uh, for folks who are older adults and also people with disabilities. Because you're right, I mean, Roosevelt Island, uh, yeah, a community with so many people who say, I've been here, you know, thirty, forty years, raised my family here. I want to age in place. So many people with disabilities on Roosevelt Island who love the community and are so invested in the community should be able to stay in the community. So building that type of housing by redoing the zoning code and zoning resolution, we're also increasing, to the extent we need it, you know, subsidies for social housing. Um, the next time there is a development and then Roosevelt Island is getting awfully built up, I know.
It's totally built up. It's not as if you can build any more, uh, any more subsidized housing here, Billy. Uh, it's, it's it. We're, we're built out at this point. Uh, and so it's a question of how do we convert what's here into subsidized housing? Can you find ways of, you know, there are different subsidy programs. Uh, how do we actually bring a subsidized program to an existing developer and have them implement that for, uh, you know, for, uh, the apartments that become available?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, one of the first things I want to do if I'm elected is put together a body that consists of the, the state, uh, city, irrelevant stakeholders and leaders on Roosevelt Island uh, to tackle the specific problem. Because one thing I hear from a lot of folks on the island is that, hey, you know, um, my services come from Queens. My elected officials are elected in Manhattan and I have, we have REOC here where, you know, that's in the state that is so heavily involved. And so, you know, I don't know if we'll have time to talk about this, but one of my ideas is to have every two or three months, town halls on Roosevelt Island to make sure that REOC is held accountable and being responsive. I want to move toward having elections for REOC. But essentially, until that happens, having a body in place of all the relevant city and state elected officials to convene developers and residents and say, look, we want a plan. We want a plan for how we're going to, whether it's, you need subsidy or something else for how we're actually going to build this meaningful level of affordable housing. Until we bring the community together and speak with one voice, and correct me if I'm wrong, if something like this is already happening, but until we can speak with one voice, I don't see how we do it. And it does require all those stakeholders because, you know, I, as a city council member, will only be able to do so much. I'll be able to take on leadership on the, the zoning resolution, governing, again, what type of future, you know, housing goes up. It's city and state combined that can put money on the table through our, perhaps through our capital budget, perhaps through operating expenses to subsidize any type of conversions that we're contemplating. And I know, you know, when I think of, you know, as you say, you know, Roosevelt Island's built up, uh, when I think of the projects Cornell has forthcoming, I wonder, do we think Cornell can be a partner in this? Can Cornell change any of their existing plans to add more affordable housing? Because unfortunately, I was not on the community board at the time that, you know, this document was put together.
Yeah, you learned.
May second, twenty thirteen, and all of Cornell's promises. But, you know, I would wonder, I would ask community leaders like yourself, should this document, could it be revisited? Should it be revisited? If so, what would we ask of Cornell, knowing what we know now? And then go from there. Go from there with one voice to say, you know, hey, Cornell, you're one, you're maybe the largest developer out here, uh, can we revisit some of your intentions?
Well, you know, I'm so glad that you brought up Cornell because quite frankly, uh, you know, the operating budget of, and Ellen, correct me if I'm wrong, because you might know, uh, know from Howard. But I think that the operating budget for Roosevelt Island is about twenty-three to twenty-seven million. Margie, if you're on this, uh, if you're still with us, then you, uh, you could probably, um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, when we went through the U-LAR process, we little, literally had to twist Cornell's arm uh, in order to get four hundred thousand a year out of them. Sorry, but four hundred thousand out of a twenty-three million dollar budget. You know, they're not, they're not pulling their weight. And here we are, um, all, you know, residents that are paying our rent, our, our rent and, and supplying the, um, supplying REOC with the money that they're using in order to provide services for cleaning our streets, patrolling our streets, running our buses, all the things that people at Cornell need. And it's coming out of our pocket. Uh, the city of New York gets rent tax from all of the corporate colocation partners that are down there that are multi-billion dollar corporations. Why does my rent go to pay for Citibank people, um, walking down my street? I have to clean it up, uh, and their multi-billion dollar corporation is just, you know, paying money to the city and the city's not returning it to Roosevelt Island. So what can you as a council member do in order to bring some of that city tax money that they're getting for the rent tax and bring it back here to Roosevelt Island to pay for, you know, the needs of, uh, of the people that are on that, uh, on that Cornell property?
Yeah, yeah, look, I think, I think we can be spending more money on Roosevelt Island through the city budget. But part of this has to do with that fundamental governance structure issue you have of things being so run at the state level. So I want to first tackle governance. I want to tackle governance by using my bully pulpit to push for REOC changes, including electing Roosevelt Islanders to REOC and making sure that REOC is answering our questions every month or every two months through those town halls that I mentioned. It's by, going back to participatory budgeting, that we're putting projects that needed on Roosevelt Island on the table, on the budget and having those conversations with Roosevelt Island, uh, leaders. But, you know, look, I, I agree, what you've described is fundamentally unfair. And I think the first thing, I mean, other than, you know, some of these things I described are a bit, it'll take some time in putting together. One of the first meetings I want to have is with Cornell leadership. And say, look, uh, I've talked to Roosevelt Island residents. Folks feel that you've not maybe either looked up all of your promises or been slow in living up to those promises or feel that some of the promises that we agreed to in twenty thirteen need to be revisited in light of twenty twenty-one realities. Whatever it is, I think I need to forge that type of relationship with Cornell. Um, because they have to be a good neighbor and given the construction projects that they have forthcoming, I think they'll be very interested in making sure that they have a partner, um, in the city council.
To be fair to Cornell, I think that, you know, they, they did, they did put Jane Swanson in as, as the community liaison. So they're trying, you know, I, I can't say they're perfect.
Yeah, that wasn't willing though. We fought in order to make that happen, didn't we?
We left, the amount of person hours we put into.
Yeah.
Fight, we could have all just pooled our income and just paid for. So.
We got six, seven minutes left. What are we going to do in that seven?
So, and also, and also just to also be fair, for, uh, the, the state, New York state paid, uh, paid for the equivalent of one million dollars a year, you know, in a lump sum.
Yeah, but that, that was capital expenses and that's because we sold them land. So that wasn't operating expense. And it was because we, we had to give up something in order to get that something. Uh, so it really wasn't part of the operating, uh, expense. It doesn't go towards the twenty-three million dollars or whatever that is that we have to spend in order to maintain this community.
Although we did get, right now we have awesome parkland. It's a little bit goose-ridden, but we have some awesome parkland with.
Yeah, but that's gonna, that's gonna disappear because they're gonna build on it.
It will absolutely disappear. But we have it for another bit of time. Um, and then they're building for another seven years. So then we need to make sure that they barge again. And we all, we're going to have to get very vigilant and it's probably during your term, Billy.
Right, right.
So, um, do you know, we're going to ask about this because we're moving right along. Do you know what happened to the storm surge burn that HHC was planning for Kohler? I know.
Oh, I've been asking around and the most recent, you know, coverage of it on Rick's blog, Roosevelt Islanders, was, um, in twenty fifteen, talking about, you know, either we'll do a berm or we'll do a five-foot wall. And some folks I talked to said, well, this was kind of dropped. The ball was dropped by the mayor's office. There was no further conversation. Um, now, I, I talked to one neighbor who described this sort of, um, uh, you know, uh, solution, uh, I guess a wall that they can put in place if something, you know, happens. Uh, if, if there's a storm coming or something like that in front of Kohler, I, I need to go visit that for myself. I, I'll tell you that the, the way she described it is that sort of a, it's a, you know, just in case or just in time barrier to put in place around, being put in place around Kohler. Um, but I don't know with the berm idea specifically what happened. And all my research indicated that the mayor's office kind of dropped the ball. Um, but if, if anyone knows anything more up to date than that, I, I'd, I'd love to.
You know, if we're on the subject, uh, Margie is still with us. I'm going to ask Margie, would you like to un, un, unmute yourself and maybe fill us in a little bit about, uh, what that berm, uh, where we are on the berm issue?
I am, yeah, I am still on a call and I, I think we're nowhere. I think Billy is right. I think the mayor's office dropped it. We had a big emergency meeting that if we didn't approve all the renderings they showed us for this berm like that day, they weren't going to be able to do it. So we all got together and said, fine, it looked beautiful. I mean, they had beautiful pictures and all, and now we're going back to the Army Corps of Engineers and we'll get back to you. That was probably, it was right after Sandy. So how many years is that? Um, it, we never heard another word and every time we called, they'd say, uh, yeah, we'll get back to you. We're working on it.
Yeah.
So, by the way, the operating budget is, the operating budget is about thirty mil and capital budget is about forty. So it, for about a total of about seventy mil.
Yeah, so four hundred.
We're not short on, we're not short on funds.
Yes, but what portion of it is being picked up by Cornell, right? We're doing everything and they're paying four hundred thousand dollars? Come on, that's ridiculous. Yeah. Very unfair. And, you know, we could, we could supply a lot more services to this community, uh, if we had more money. And, and why shouldn't we? I mean, if we were in the city of New York, then, uh, in, in Manhattan, then, uh, the money that, um, is being brought in by these corporate colo, colocation partners, uh, would go to paying for the services that they're using. Uh, and, and then Roosevelt Islanders would be able to keep it and, and, and create additional services. Uh, we could be subsidizing more people, right? We could actually have a subsidy base of our own in order to keep affordable housing on Roosevelt Island. And instead, uh, we're, you know, paying for, uh, Citibankers to walk down Main Street. Uh, so I'm sorry, I, I just think that there's a lot that can be done and it's not being done.
I agree. And I'd like to see them commit to doing some of their banking on a bank on Roosevelt Island. Uh, uh, or a credit union perhaps, but, uh, I know we haven't had a chance to talk about amalgamated, but.
Can I just in on that one? I, I was on the REOC board for a while. That's why Joyce is, is asking me this. In a former life, I was also, I, at Citibank and one of the departments I was in was branch locations. And the problem here is almost ninety percent of people bank where they work. They don't bank where they live. So we don't get the kind of foot traffic to support a branch. And the only reason these other branches have been able to come and stay like amalgamated is because the governor's office put a whole chunk of change in as a deposit and let it sit there. If we could get them to do that again, that'd be fine. They'd have a good deposit base and, and it could help everybody. But unless they do that, there just is not the foot traffic to support a branch on the island.
Right, and you know, Citibank is down there at Cornell. So, you know, why can't we, uh, create some kind of a incentive for Citibank? Uh, they're not paying us to support our operate, operating costs. Well, you know, give us a break here. Give us a bank. You're a bank. Give us a bank.
May I ask you, I mean, do you think a credit union could work just because, I'll say, the banking development program, banking development district program that I believe was key to bringing amalgamated here in the first place, a year or two ago, that was expanded to include credit unions.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I wonder whether that. So, uh, you know, I wonder whether that program and the incentives involved could entice a credit union in a way that a credit union. I know there's been a credit union in the past, but those incentives didn't exist in the past.
Absolutely. What you need is just a big old deposit by somebody. Because the people who use a bank here and go in and they're just using it for what a lot of my friends do, an extra checking account in case you need money fast and it's right here on the island. But most of their money is with their main bank, either in Citibank or Chase or somewhere else. If the state just takes a chunk of change and sticks it right here in a branch, it could make all the difference in the world.
Exactly. And, you know, it's the seniors and, uh, the disabled, uh, that really are suffering from not having a branch here on Roosevelt.
Right.
Uh, particularly because, you know, many, many people that are, um, that are able bodied and a little bit younger, you know, they're, they're really connected by the internet. I rarely go to my branch. My branch is in Queens and, you know, I do my banking online. But let's face it, you know, there, there are a lot of seniors that don't have that, uh, facility, uh, don't have, you know, the know how to do that. And, uh, a lot of disabled, uh, folks that that don't have that ability. So these are the people that are really suffering by this and.
It could also be, it could also be a satellite branch that's connected to the Long Island City one or somewhere where they kind of share the deposit base, and they're only open a couple of days a week. That that could work.
Yeah. Uh, that was a very good idea, Margie.
I need to ask you this question because the main person who keeps asking it is not here today. Um, the the blood center, just tell us what your, um, just tell us in a nutshell, your, your, um, are you for or against the blood center, uh, the blood center, um, building?
Oh, I'm again.
Power.
Yeah, I'm I'm against that proposal completely. Um, it would it would cast shadows over St. Catherine's Park. Um, and they just presented us the other day on this. It would have shadows cast over the Julian Richmond Education Complex. It's way out of, uh, context for the block. It would go from, the building would go from seventy five feet to three hundred thirty four feet. And it would set a horrible precedent for the rest of the city. The most fundamental objection I have is that this is zoning for dollars. It's letting someone print money out of thin air by taking a zoning code that only currently lets them go up to, uh, you know, basically their current height, seventy five feet. And, uh, you know, would let them go up hundreds more feet. And so it's essentially, I think, corporate welfare. We are writing them a check to let them fund their operations. And we know the blood center could continue the operations that they have proposed having for themselves on their same exact footprint without this proposal. There's also a location, one hundred twenty fifth street where they could build. But, you know, what they're proposing would essentially be to lease out space to other commercial tenants. And I I think it's a terrible precedent. It's not what the zoning code was meant to do. It's one of the reasons why I want to rewrite it.
Is it, is, was that a way of the blood center making money for for their good work? I mean, it's a non, blood center is a nonprofit. So is that, is that a way that they would be, you know, getting money to fund their operation?
Yeah, I I think it's how they would pay for the expansion in particular. Um, that's the big issue. So going to a three hundred thirty four foot building, um, that has to be paid for. And so by leasing it out to these other commercial entities who would pay for that, I'm sure it would also pay for, you know, a lot of the operations that they have planned. But they've already conceded to us that they could do the exact operations they want to do in the current zoning configuration that they have right now.
So folks, uh, I'm sorry to, uh, have to be the wet blanket over this party. Uh, but I think we've kind of exhausted our time. And, uh, Billy, we can't thank you enough for, uh, for coming, uh, this evening and giving us some insights from your, uh, you know, uh, about your background and your and your political positions. Uh, we wish you good luck. Uh, want to remind everybody that we'll be here on Wednesday, and our guest on Wednesday is Kim, and I hope I don't damage your name here. Uh, Moscaratola, did I do that right?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Uh, and also to remind everybody that June twenty second is the day to cast your vote. And your vote is your voice. So let your voice be heard loud and clear on June twenty second, and we'll see you guys on Wednesday. And I'm about to blow out our little torch here so that we can continue with it on Wednesday. So thanks for coming and joining us, and good night, everybody.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Ellen.